Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons and men. With glowing hearts we see rise the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, everybody. We've got attendance. Can we have a motion to accept the mayor? Excuse the mayor from the meeting. Counselor Cleveland, I think you want to do that, don't you?
Yes, sir. I'd like to officially excuse Mayor Moot from this meeting. She's quite ill, and so we'd like to officially excuse her.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Declarations of conflict, you can do that when it happens. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I think Counselor Hood has something, from what I understand.
The worship goes to have an in-camera item. I would prefer to be able to mean for approval. And that would be with respect to the extension contract.
Okay, contract. That'll be under thirteen A, Counselor. Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, worship. I've got three quick items. One is crosswalk painting.
Crosswalk, thank you.
Second is accessibility.
Okay, that'll be under B, crosswalk, C, accessibility.
Third is deer.
And D is deer.
And I'm not calling you something for affection.
No. What about D, B, C, D, E is after D, right?
Yes.
Maybe, you say you want to say something about Gary Nickerson, maybe?
Gary Nickerson as well.
Okay, Gary. Gary Nickerson and under committee, how about under committee chairs? We take care of communities in Bloom, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Gary Nickerson, under E. Move the acceptance of the agenda with the additions, please. Moved by Counselor Barry, seconded by Counselor Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Approval of the minutes of the public hearing, September the 12th, 2019. Moved by Counselor McLeod. Seconded by Counselor Steve Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? The Town Council minutes of September the 12th, 2019. Moved by Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Counselor Barry. Don Barry, that is. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? The minutes of the Committee of the Hall, September the 25th, 2019. Moved by Counselor Don Barry, seconded by Counselor Steve Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Committee of the Hall, September the 25th, 2019, in-camera. Don't everybody jump up? Moved by Counselor McLeod, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Town Council, September the 30th, 2019. Moved by Counselor Don Barry. Seconded by Counselor Steve Barry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary? Thank you. In Town Council, September the 30th, 2019, the in-camera session. Moved by Counselor Don Barry, seconded by Counselor Steve Barry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Presentation. No presentations tonight, right? Okay, good, thank you. Business arising land use bylaw amendment read pot-bellied pigs, second reading. And from what I understand by solicitor, because I was at a previous function representing the mayor, I am not allowed to participate since I was not at the public hearing, right?
Right.
So I will ask the Chair of the P A C to come up and take the table, please. Or you want to do, you might as well come up here and do it after I remove myself from the table, Jim. So you can come right up here.
Earlier in the public hearing, I asked, follow protocol and asked three times for anybody from the audience to speak, and no one spoke. And so now we're, now we're in a position where someone, we should have some discussion from a council point of view to amend the land use bylaw to permit ownership of pot-bellied pigs as a pet. That's outlined in a report by our planner, Morris Lloyd. So, from a discussion point of view, my fellow counselors, and now Jeff is asking.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, first of all, I want to point out that the planner is present, Morris Lloyd, if there are any questions for the planner. As well, I want to, I would ask, Mr. Chair, that you maybe seek advice from the solicitor in terms of what the requirements are, so everyone is clear what the requirements are for the passage of second reading on this, on this matter.
So, Greg. Greg, please, Greg Barrow.
Well, just for, thank you, for planning documents, so if there was a motion to move second reading and it was seconded, there's two people absent, there's only five of you, but the M G A would still require that four people vote in favor of the motion for it to pass. So if it was three to two, obviously, although that would be more, that would carry a normal motion, it would not carry a motion for planning document. So there'd have to be four people in favor of it.
Thank you very much, Greg Barrow. Should we ask Morris to come to the front and, Morris, would you like to sit and maybe educate a little bit for those that don't sit on the P A C? And then have a discussion. As you're getting set, Morris, I'll ask, I'll, Wade, Counselor Cleveland, speak.
Okay, thank you. First thing I was going to do was just ask for Morris to come ahead, because I think, I think some explanation, and I'd like to hear his opinion, actually. But a couple of things I want to mention, a couple of thoughts. First off, I, again, sat firmly on the fence, so I'm a little disappointed, not with, not with you guys, and I'm speaking to the people who have made this application in the first place. There's been, and Counselor Barry can attribute this, there's been a little bit of controversy one way and the other when it comes to this motion on social media, and I just find it, what's the word I'm looking for, maybe annoying, that those who are so quick with their opinions while they're sitting behind a keyboard can't be bothered to come here and actually express a legitimate opinion in this process. This process is important, and I've been very, I don't know, I've been very pleased with the way things have worked, and I, there have been some who have been upset at the very process, but this is, this is how it's supposed to be. Someone's interested in something, someone has a strong feeling about something, they bring it to Planning Committee. Planning Committee looks at it, gives it due consideration, and then moves it forward, and discussion is taking part the whole way around. And it's funny, between those who are for and those who are against, there's also in the middle a group that seemed upset at the very thought that we should ask the question. And I find that more than a little annoying. So if, for those who have opinions, how do I put it that it makes sense? Perhaps that those who have opinions and don't participate have less right than those who actually felt strongly enough to be here. So there's that bit. I have two questions. One is our planner, Morris Lloyd's opinion on this, and the second one is about the S P C A. The one thing that worried me as much as anything when this whole thing came out, I don't care what people keep as a pet, it doesn't bother me in the least, but it does worry me if it creates some kind of an undue pressure on groups who are taken care of and controlling animals. You know, we have, we have dog issues, you know, we have cat issues. If you throw pig issues onto this, what happens? And I'm not saying that there are issues, I'm saying that I would like to have heard from someone when it comes to the S P C A as well. And I believe, actually, C A O, did you not have a conversation with the S P C A or Dog Control when it comes to this? Okay. And may I ask you what they had to say?
So the, it was just a simple exchange of emails, and we, we contracted the enforcement of our dog bylaw to the S P C A. And so my question was, does your organization have experience in enforcing bylaws similar to dog bylaws with pot-bellied pigs? If so, or perhaps even if not, is enforcement of pot-bellied pig bylaws a service the S P C A of Nova Scotia would be interested and able to provide to the town of Yarmouth if the bylaw passes? They got back to me later that same day, within five minutes, and said, yes, the Nova Scotia S P C A would provide enforcement of a bylaw that would pertain to pot-bellied pigs. We provide bylaw enforcement to livestock in Kings County. While we have not noticed a lot of need to enforce those bylaws, if an infraction occurs and we have a need to intake, we will figure it out.
Can I ask you a question? Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have thoughts they wish to express or words at this point? I'm sorry about that, Morris.
It's okay.
Do you have any more input that would be helpful? Okay. Well, Morris, Morris, you go ahead, and then Counselor Hood. Do you have any questions or?
I'm sorry, you want me first? Well, do you want me just to kind of review the background here, Mr. Chairman? Is that what you want?
Yeah, I know that Counselor Steve and Counselor Cliff and Don are, Counselor Don are not on the P A C.
Okay. The application was to amend the land use bylaw to permit the ownership of a pot-bellied pig on a property as a pet. The property specifically is located at 508 Brunswick Street Extension. Of course, any change in the bylaw would apply to all residential areas unless there's a restriction. I did a fair amount of research into this, looking on the Internet, but also in contacting other municipalities in the province through their planning directors. And the bottom line is you can consider pot-bellied pigs as pets, or you can consider them as livestock, or you can consider them both. The research that I found from, that I did, I felt that they probably would not be a compatible use in a compact residential area because of their behavioral characteristics. They like to get out and root around, they don't like to be controlled. If you try and control them, they react and squeal, and so forth. And my recommendation was that the town consider pot-bellied pigs to be livestock. However, I did in my research find out that, as in many cases, animals can be good therapy animals, and pot-bellied pigs are quite often used for therapy purposes. So my initial recommendation to the P A C was that they refuse the amendment unless the pot-bellied pig was, could be used as a therapy animal, and in that case only if there was no, if that was the best solution, if you like. In, I don't know if I have to specifically go through from each town. Anyway, after much discussion at the board, the, at the P A C, the P A C sent the matter back for further consideration with the proviso that if this was to go ahead, what are the conditions that might be imposed that would, would make this happen and be useful? I felt initially that the, if this is to happen, they should be in residential units that have direct access to the ground, that is, single-family houses or semi-detached houses. I further felt that the, they should be considered as dogs and treated the same. And all the material that I read, there was indication that these are very smart animals, and in fact, they are smarter than dogs, and they can be trained. They're also severely smart, they can be difficult, because they can learn how to open cupboards and things and that kind of thing that dogs can't. So, given the request from the P A C, my, I filed a supplementary report, and I said that if you wish to go ahead with this, then I would recommend that no more than two pot-bellied pigs be permitted as pets in a single detached home, or a building that has a shared vertical wall, that is, so you have direct access to the ground. I felt the pig should be contained in the residence. In other words, you're not going to build a pen out back and put the pig in a pen like you might on a farm. That the pig has regular care by a registered veterinarian, is vaccinated for rabies, and treated for routine parasite control, and this came out of some of the background information I found, and that the pig has an implanted microchip as a permanent identification. Further, that I recommended that the provisions of the town of Yarmouth bylaw respecting dogs shall apply to pot-bellied pigs as pets, except where there's an obvious reference, which with reasonable interpretation can only be applied to dogs. For example, there's a whole section in there on hunting dogs. Well, you're not going to hunt with pigs, but, so that wouldn't apply. I think as you go through the bylaw, as I did, I went through each section and ticked it off or put an X by it, or a couple of the cases put a question mark. I further said that, you know, where there's a conflict between the provisions, that I just said, the bylaw respecting dogs and the requirements of any other level of government, that the most restrictive provisions shall apply. That's pretty standard in our, in our documents. Further said that the sections two and three, that is, the enforcement is defined by, shall be enforced by town staff as defined in the bylaw respecting dogs. I don't think this is a matter that the development officer should be asked to enforce because they're not, she's not, it's not the kind of thing she normally does, but that in fact, it would be whoever enforces your dog bylaw from time to time, I understand that's the S P C A now, but it could change, that that would be the enforcement officer in looking at this. So that was the, where it went to the P A C, and then is forwarded here to council for, for approval.
Thank you very much, Morris. Counselor Cliff.
So I just did my research, so I asked the question, are pot-bellied pigs good pets? Google. Pigs are not good pets if left at home, alone with no mental stimulation or physical challenges. Because of their intelligence, they can be aggressive with young children. Good news is, they're trainable. Pot-bellied pigs average about 125 pounds. Anyone talk to the neighbors on this? What number, what number?
They're not looking at it that way. It's an overall.
No, but if somebody's going to have a pot-bellied pig, does the neighbor get any say in it?
Does the neighbor get any say if somebody decides they want a dog?
I think we're past the dog bylaw. A pot-bellied pig is a rooting animal. That it comes up here. They root, that's their natural inclination. My father, my grandfather had pigs. They were in a pen. They were never let out of the pen, they walked around in their own book.
Well, I, the recommendation I put forward was that the pot-bellied pig would be in the house, the same as a dog would be in the house. If it was outside, it would be supervised, and that, the same as a dog under the dog bylaw.
Some kind of a petition that was got up on Facebook isn't going to change my vote. I think, I don't think I'm going to go down this road and vote, I'm going to vote against it. I am, you're rusty, you can do what you want to do, I'm not going to criticize you about it, but I, I think that we're opening up, I think we're opening up an opportunity, I'm thinking about my, my house that I have, and my neighbors that I have, and how I would feel if they put a pig in the backyard or in their house. I wouldn't feel good about it.
I certainly respect that, Cliff, as Counselor Cliff.
And I have a feeling some other people in town might feel the same way.
Counselor Wade.
Okay, I have, it was just one particular statement that you made that I, I want, and perhaps you can't even answer this, and maybe the C A O would be more aware when it comes to this, but you had mentioned that pot-bellied pigs like companionship, and you recommended that, you know, no more than two in a group. But here's the part that worries me about that, it kind of jumped out at me, and I apologize. But, so you get two pigs together and they have babies, how does one enforce that there's no more than two? Is somebody coming to take them away? How would that work? Is that even an enforceable part of a bylaw if we were to put it that way?
Have babies that's six months of age.
Yeah, that's not my question. My question is, what happens when they, if they were to multiply? It's pretty hard to enforce it. You know, a two family, a two-pig family, if they're going to have a brood, and what happens then?
The restriction is, as Morris has indicated, is two, period.
Yeah, so, okay. You know what? My wife and I were two for a while, too, and then we were five. Do you know what I mean? I mean, is that enforceable? I guess is my question.
Perhaps I should point out, Counselor, that in looking at conditions that were recommended, in one of the documents I had, one of the conditions could be that pot-bellied pigs as pets have to be neutered.
Okay, fair enough.
So you could add that condition if you like, if that's a real concern to you as a. Well, you see, I didn't include it in my report, Counselor, maybe that's why. But that was in the, in the information that I gathered.
Okay, thank you.
Are we getting closer to, sorry, Don?
I guess I have just one comment. I listened to the part where it's a therapy animal. I think it's almost like the dog incidents where they want them to come to school, there's a great big protocol and all kinds of stuff that happens along with it. I think if it's, if it's for therapy, then, and if they can pass some kind of regulation, or we can make some kind of regulation related to that it's for a therapy cause, then I would 100% support, support the idea. But other than that, I wouldn't be supporting the idea.
It's a therapeutic dog, with a physician's.
Right.
Counselor Steve.
So I did post a survey to my Facebook page, and I know some at this table don't believe in these surveys, but I will say that the results are just in in 24 hours, and 84% of the people who voted said that they wanted me to vote yes on the subject, and 15 said no, so I will be supporting the, the motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application.
I just ask Greg, if we just vote, Greg, if you go ahead and, again, and just.
What do we do?
No, but he, we have to have four votes out of five for it to pass. And, and so we have a mover and a securer, and four out of five of us have to vote yes for it to pass. And I, you know, so I'm not sure I have a good feel, I know respectfully where you stand, Counselor Cliff, and not positive about Don. Have some, yeah, so, so the, so the motion, someone make the motion to amend the land use bylaw to permit ownership of pot-bellied pigs as a pet, as outlined in our planner's report. So if someone wants to make that motion and have it seconded, and then call for a question? But you also are.
I tried to make a motion to deny that.
Okay.
Request, that recommendation from the planner, but.
From P A C, yeah.
I mean, that is a proper motion, if it's seconded and voted on, you can deny it, and then that would end it right there if it passes, obviously, and if it doesn't, then, unless somebody wants to make a motion in favor of it, which is seconded and then voted on it, then it's just, if there's no motion, then there's no motion.
The other way around, it's for.
That's correct, yeah.
So there's no motion yet?
Then, there's no change of the, there's no change to the bylaw because there's no motion that's approved to change it.
So.
Well, there's a motion on, on the floor by Counselor Hood to deny it, which, so that would need to be seconded, so if somebody's prepared to second that, then there could be a vote on it, but.
Break down some of the, no one's seconding my motion.
So if the motion.
Well, there's no motion, it's not seconded.
No, but if, if your motion is seconded.
It isn't.
If it is seconded, and it's voted on, does that end the discussion?
It would end the discussion, yes.
No, but does it end?
Well, if it passes, yes.
Yeah, if it passes, yeah. And, and if it vote, if we, if we vote in favor of the motion, it's, the application is denied, or the reading doesn't pass, if we vote against your motion, does that mean the, we succeed?
No, no, you'd still need a motion to approve the land use, to approve, you'd still need, need a positive motion.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking about. So if someone, so what's the wish of my fellow counselors? Someone want to second Cliff's motion, Counselor Cliff's motion, and we'll make, and we'll vote on it? Or do we just simply want to vote on the, on the, as, as indicated, to amend the land use bylaw to permit ownership?
So you want to, so I would say that. I would be in favor if it's a therapy animal like anybody else. So, so I would make a motion, I would make a motion if we're going to, if we're going to approve a pot-bellied pig or any other animal, that it's, and I better not say any other animal, because we've already got dogs and, and all that cats laws and all that stuff, but for a pot-bellied pig, if it's a therapy animal, I would vote 100% for it.
As the therapy animal as prescribed by the license.
Right.
Well, you probably should refer it back to staff or develop some.
Okay.
Policy or bylaws on how to.
We're bouncing around.
We're about, yeah, we're.
No, but if you want to, if you're in favor of the, you know, therapy animal approach, then you should refer it back to staff to develop some criteria around that that could come back to council, because that's, I don't think council could do much with it.
Yes, so you get a second.
I have no second, I'm drawing a motion.
Okay. So unless there's somebody prepared to make a motion, we should move on to the next agenda item.
So what do we mean by, what do you mean by the next agenda? Not to deal with this at all?
Yeah, the, the next thing on this. Because there's no motion, we can't, can't make somebody make a motion.
Okay. So as, as our solicitor has indicated, that if we don't want to deal with it, we'll just simply have the deputy mayor come back in and we'll deal, begin to follow up on our agenda. And...
I'm so upset, I almost spilled my diet coke. No, I'm not upset. Um, I'm gonna make the motion, because I'm just getting tired of you guys talking around in circles. Um, I'll move, make the motion, if somebody can second it or not, that we move on to, doesn't, does this not just proceed into third reading? Or is second reading final? Okay, then I'll make the motion that we approve the land use bylaw to revise it so that pot-bellied pigs are allowed in Yarmouth. That's my motion. Anybody wanna second it?
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Question is being called, all those in favor of, of the, of the motion, please signal by saying aye. Aye? One, two, three? All those nay? So Greg, just to, at this point, because we needed four out of five, we have three to two, right?
Yes, section 205 of Municipal Government Act, section eight, says for planning documents, they have to be adopted by a majority vote of the maximum number of members that may be elected to council. That's four.
So thank you very much, fellow counselors, and, and, and Morris, and, and the applicants and back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, new business. Uh, request for decision regional planning, does CAO?
Your worship, thank you, your worship, uh, the CAOs from municipalities, from Digby, Yarmouth and Shelburne County have met, and we meet regularly, fairly regularly, talk about issues of common interest, and one that arose fairly recently was the, the issue of land use planning. Uh, most of the municipalities, in fact, all other municipalities within, uh, the region use contracted planners, and in fact, we are tonight, in, in the absence of, of our full-time planner, uh, we do from time to time use contract planners. The conversation was about mandatory planning and coordination of planning, and was there some way that we could figure out a way to somehow cooperatively, uh, have a planning service? So we didn't get into the weeds on this one in terms of trying to figure it out ourselves. Uh, what we thought was that maybe we should get some help, and, in order to get that help, to go to the province under the Provincial Municipal Modernization Fund, and ask them to support, uh, support an application to, to develop a model that municipalities can individually decide to opt in or opt out of. We are looking for $75,000 from the province, if there is sufficient interest within the region, uh, to do this work. We would anticipate that up to $7,500 would come from, uh, the participating municipalities, uh, or 10% of the cost. And so the motion that's suggested is the council support the application for provincial funding for a shared land use planning service, and that the request be for 90% funding provincially and the remaining 10% paid by participating municipalities if the application is successful. And so, your worship, I'm recommending to you that you support this work, because I think regardless of, of any other issues, there certainly is some benefit to, uh, having some common elements, uh, in our planning services around the region, and, uh, this may be a way to figure out how to do that successfully.
Good, Counselor Cleveland.
Just want clarification on this one, and I apologize, uh, this is the first I'm hearing on this one, I must have missed it on my way for, and, uh, looking through this whole thing, but what would that look like? And what I'm asking is, does that mean we would give up our own planning in exchange for having something larger? Is this, are you talking about hiring something out? What are you talking about specifically?
So we didn't get into the weeds in terms of what it might look like, but, uh, both of those possibilities, uh, so I think you mentioned two possibilities there, but let me just tell you a couple of possibilities. One is that, uh, we establish a municipal corporation of some kind that hires planners and delivers the service as, as a separate corporate entity to all of the municipalities, partly, you know, and it could be funded either on a flat rate, it could be funded on a per-use basis, it could be funded on a combination. Uh, it could also be a case that, uh, the, the model might be that one municipality employs the planners and sells the service. Those are two possibilities, there's probably about 16 others. Uh, we didn't get into the weeds and say, look, let's do a study and see if this particular model works. We said, let's do, let's do a study or engage somebody to, to work with us, uh, to look at best practices, and to talk to, to all of the municipalities in the region, to figure out if there's a model that people could rally around to provide a service.
Okay. One example you gave, I really liked, the other one I didn't like at all, but I do like the idea that the provincial government would actually cough money up for once about something that we're doing, so...
I can make a motion, accept the staff recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to support moving on.
Moved by Counselor Cleveland, seconded by Counselor McLeod. Any other questions or comments? Looks like Counselor Hood wants to...
So I wanna be clear, I think I am, but, so this would be, um, a regional, a regional authority like that would, uh, provide services to each individual municipal unit, and those services would be to implement and to, um, operate their zoning and land use bylaws. It would not be a regional planning approach to planning, but is there a chance that it could be a first baby step down that road?
So, so the, it is a chance that it could be a baby step towards that, and we, we talked about that, let's not scare everybody away by, by try, trying to take the one giant leap, but there, there is provision in the Municipal Government Act that any two or more municipalities can have a shared plan, and so, uh, one thing that we think would be a benefit, for instance, is if, if something was, if there was an issue, uh, that was tackled by a municipality in the region, a lot of thought went into it, a lot of consultation, and, and, you know, some, some good, um, bylaw come out of it, that that's learning within the planning corporation that then could be shared with all other municipalities as something they've learned, and they could, they could then consider adopting in their own, so there would be, uh, that, I guess you call economies of scale.
So there would be an opportunity to, for sort of a best practices planning collaboration amongst these people, which may assist us in trying to nibble away at some of these regional, uh, think, objectives that might be best for all of us.
Good, any other questions, comments, concerns? Question's been called, all those in favor, signify aye. Contrary, thank you, letter of congratulations for Lieutenant Governor's Diversity and Inclusion Awards. Is that you, CAO? Is that Pam? Who, whoa? Yes, okay. Can we, can we have a motion to congratulate Eden's Corner Store on winning the, uh, on a, uh, winning the, uh, Lieutenant Governor's Diversity and Inclusion Award? So moved by Counselor Barry, seconded by Counselor McLeod. All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Contrary, thank you, uh, Remo Agreement, CAO.
Your worship, I was late attaching this agreement, we had talked about, uh, the negotiation that was occurring, uh, a month or so ago. The actual text of the agreement, you only received late today, so, uh, I wouldn't expect that you've necessarily had the chance to read it and absorb it, so, uh, it might be premature to ask you to, to put forward a motion tonight, so if you're not comfortable, just please consider a motion to defer the item to the next council meeting.
Your worship, I make a motion, had a chance to read it very quickly, but, uh, it is fairly lengthy, and I make a motion that we defer this to the next regular, well, next regular motion of council, uh, meeting of council.
Moved and seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, contrary, against, oh, nay, nobody there. Council Advisory Committee's Committee of the Whole, Counselor McLeod.
Thank you, uh, deputy. I recommend that council adopt the Town of Yarmouth Filming Guide. These are from, uh, the Committee of the Whole of September the 25th, 2019.
Moved and seconded, any questions? Question's been called, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Contrary, go ahead, Counselor.
I recommend that council direct staff to investigate potential parking on Chester, Main, and King Streets in the vicinity of the new restaurants opening in the area.
Moved and seconded, any other questions?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that council send a letter to congratulate the Yarmouth County Trail Development Association on their, on their Recreation Nova Scotia Mayflower Award.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Question, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, thank you?
I recommend that council approve the proposed paving and layout for the expansion of the Collin Street parking lot. A comprehensive redevelopment can be considered when the budget is allocated.
Actually, they were doing some work there today. They're doing, taking out the old water main to the house. Past the motion? We gotta discuss, moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, I'm not allowed to talk about it? Okay, it's underway today.
Top secret.
Yeah. Counselor McLeod.
I lost track of the numbers.
After the, I think it's after the parking lot.
Sorry, it's number five, I'm just teasing, you guys are smiling out loud. I recommend that council send a letter to the residents of Willow and Collin Street, thanking them for their concern regarding 30 Willow Street, and that it will be continued to be monitored.
Questions? Questions been called, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Contrary? That's a, that's an affirmative. Counselor Cleveland?
I'd, I'd be in favor if I knew what you were talking about.
That's all right, we're, we're good. Uh, Counselor McLeod?
I recommend that council send a letter to Kelly and Scott Mitchell to advise them of the Community Asset Donation Program.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Steve?
Just to further that, um, they actually, yesterday, there was a grand opening for a charity, um, that they started in, um, in memory of Aiden Mitchell, their daughter, down on Water Street at the Tri-County Mental Health and Wellness, I believe. So it just opened yesterday, and they actually, Scott and Kelly have a, a room there that's, um, for mental health, for any youth that wanna drop in or, or whatnot, so just to let you know that they are kind of out in the community and, you know, doing what they can to help her name live, live on in a proper way, so I just wanted to...
And I also know that the parents and the grandparents are very pleased with our support. Very, very pleased. Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Contrary, Counselor McLeod?
I recommend that council grant up to $2,500 to the Candy Lane Festival, Candy Cane Lane Festival.
Moved and seconded.
That takes us back into the 70s, Cliff, doesn't it?
Does. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, Counselor McLeod?
I recommend that council sponsor the Yakro Annual Fundraiser at the bronze level of $250.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? He, can you, uh, put the Counselor Cleveland stepped away for that motion, please?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor McLeod?
I recommend that council investigate the status of repairs of windows on Main Street on various buildings with boarded windows.
Seconded by Counselor Barry, any other questions? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
And the last recommendation, I recommend that council to pursue, along with the Yarmouth County Trail Development Association and Yarmouth Recreation, the ATV Share the Road Initiative for connecting trails for ATV use.
Second.
Moved and seconded, very good. Very good, Counselor.
What happened? Who are you?
He's, he's not, he listens once in a while. He's good. Uh, question, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Uh, thank you, everybody, thank you, Counselor McLeod, nothing else?
That's, that's finishing...
Keep, keep your light on, I think we're gonna do the Planning Advisory Committee next, Counselor.
All right. So as a result of our meeting two nights ago, yeah, from the Planning Advisory Committee, I recommend we proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to protect and enhance the working waterfront as outlined in our planner's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And, uh, I'd like to apologize for my absence, um, my email was getting bounced back, I guess they had a, once I had to switch over to another, another, another device, I got an extra dot in there somewhere, and I didn't get the notice, notification of that meeting, so I'm sorry I wasn't there, I usually don't miss them.
We, we missed you.
Good, good, good.
Kind of.
Counselor Hood, I believe, has a comment or question, do we have a second, you seconded there, Counselor Cleveland? Counselor Hood?
So I've got a question arising, uh, we received a strategic update on September, in September, this month, past month, and, uh, under the CAO's thing, waterfront management mandate review, June, discussed at multiple meetings, board uneasy about structural change. Does that in any way touch on the substance of this motion?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, your worship, no, that, that doesn't, that is, so this is, what was, in this motion coming through planning, was it, what a set, was a set of new zoning rules for the, for the waterfront. That is about the corporate governance, and we had talked about the pretend, perhaps the possibility of the waterfront corporation under the Companies Act becoming a waterfront advisory committee to council. And the, the members, and we talked about that a couple of times at the board level, the, the members were uneasy about the idea of giving up the corporate status. I think some of them felt that it was an initiative to, to reduce their role in some, in some way, and that wasn't the intent, and when I, excuse me, when I felt that that was the way it was being interpreted, I thought it's not worth, it's not worth it, because they're valuable, uh, members of, of that group, and I surely didn't want them to feel like they had to, uh, accept a diminished role. It, it was about actually bringing them closer to the town.
So, Jim, what, what have been the, has the board itself discussed these planning changes? Your chair of both boards, so... Your, your chair of the planning?
That's right, and, and, and also...
And waterfront development?
So, individuals, but not the board as a, as a group, but I think individuals, we've met, and go ahead, uh...
We actually, uh, we actually did have, uh, chairman came to, and was the board, and discussed this in the early stages.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm sure that didn't happen recently.
It's been a while.
It's, yeah, it's been a while, but it's taken a while to, to get there.
Well, that, has it happened in the last three years? Last year, last two years and six months? You say, okay?
So it's a good discussion, I, I understand, uh, Counselor Cliff, where you're coming from.
Well, where I'm coming from is I've had some con, you know, I've been... Well, where I'm coming from is I've had some, you know, I've been contacted by some of the original board members, and they are uneasy.
Yeah.
And when I saw this in here, I thought it's appropriate to ask the question.
No, there's, I have no problem, Jeff and I have no problem with that.
We're good, counselor? Good?
I don't think I'm good.
Okay.
I've asked a question.
Good. Move the second, questions been called.
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Go ahead, counselor.
Oh, that's it.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you. Police Advisory Board Re, Criminal Record Checks. Jeff, is that yours, or is that Counselor Hood? Put your light on there, and we'll get you going, man.
At a recent meeting of the Police Advisory Committee, it was noted that the Town of Yarmouth is the only municipality that charges for criminal record checks. At this time, as municipality of Yarmouth and municipality of Argyle have already waived their fees, it was agreed to recommend to council that the fees be waived for the town. And, so it was moved by Sonia Ryan, seconded by Dave Saxton, to recommend to council that the fees for criminal record checks be waived for Yarmouth Town residents, and I so moved.
Move the second. Any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Do we have many requests for that in the run of a year, or, just wondering, and how much do we charge?
Don't charge anything sometimes, because I know I went up to get one recently, and they take about 10 minutes and had it done, and didn't charge me anything.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so it really depends on what the purpose is of the criminal record check, I believe, for some youth activities such as coaching, whatnot, they may not be required, but in other cases, I think it's as much as $25. And so, just, the fees were put in place initially a few years ago, when there was a heightened requirement, more organizations were putting this in place, and I think they were a little concerned that people were coming and getting criminal record checks done, even when they weren't required. And so, it was a way of at least making sure it was something that was actually needed to cause the work to be done. The volume has not been over the top, and they, the police staff actually recommended that the fees be waived, and so it's on their recommendation, so I have to believe that they believe the load won't be excessive by removing the fees.
Counselor Don?
I think the procedure has speeded up 100% compared to past years. You go there, you can get it done within, I'm guessing, two hours at the very most. Sometimes it's a five-minute stuff, you have to have your paperwork in a row. I think this is a good idea.
If you're not a criminal, it works good.
Yeah.
That, they still, they send all the stuff away, so there's the funeral check, there's another thing that's attached to it now, so it makes it a little more when they're checking on you, so I think it's outstanding that we're starting to do something that is going to cost our public nothing to get the information that we need to make our public safe. Perfect idea.
Good. Questions been called, all those, Martha, you want to say something quick? Usually don't.
The criminal records check is becoming an onerous situation financially for volunteers. I had to have a special one, an original, in order to mentor breastfeeding moms on the telephone. If I, every place I go with this dog, as a therapy dog, not a service dog, I'm required to provide that record. St. John Ambulance sends it, but still, so if there's a charge, it mounts up very quickly. That's all, thank you.
Good. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Is that everything from Police Advisory, counselor?
I have nothing else, your worship. Let's raise one issue. I'm the chair of the Police Advisory. I don't remember that being quite, I never remember it. But I showed up, I'm prepared, it allows you a job running a meeting.
I can't believe that. It's an impossibility.
Well, I had to leave, I was going PSC or something else.
We'll look that up and see.
So would you check that out? If I'm the chair, fine, but I don't remember.
I can't believe they'd run a lazy meeting. Your lazy meeting would be my best of all time. You're going to check on that, Jeff? Reports for information, questions for committee chairs? I think Counselor Cleveland, maybe you're going to give a little report on what happened a weekend and a half ago, and maybe Counselor Steve can jump in on what his activity was during the same weekend, if that's all right?
Me and him had a busy weekend. I'll start with me and the Communities in Bloom National Symposium, which we've been working on for a long time. As a matter of fact, the first talking of this was probably more than five years ago, and when we first proposed it, Communities in Bloom themselves weren't particularly interested, or a little taken aback that we should ask. We are the smallest town to ever request even being with hosting the national symposium.
I think the next, I think the next smallest one was.
Summerside, I think.
Sixty or seventy thousand people.
Yes, so it's a huge, like, by far, and they actually, I had an interesting conversation with Bob Lewis during this whole thing. Bob is one of the people who works on the National Board, and he said, at the time, they pretty much expected this to fail miserably, but they thought, hey, let's give this a go, what the heck? The amount of persuading that we were doing was well enough that it was obvious that we were willing and able to try to pull this thing off, but they did, they did go forward with it with fairly low expectations. We showed them how it was done. We hosted, we hosted the world, we did an exemplary job, if I do say so myself, and I do. We really did a fantastic job. As a matter of fact, there were a few moments during the national awards where people were winning awards, and again, these awards are focusing on individual communities and their achievements. And there were two or three times when people won these awards that they came up and never spoke a word about themselves. All they spoke about was, A, the quality of the hospitality, and just the quality of what Yarmouth did. So we had a really huge impression. The thing was perfection, and I really couldn't go any further without saying it would never been perfection without the volunteers that we had. Volunteers are the key to the whole thing, and I'm sure Counselor Steve Barry will say the same thing when it comes to his particular event as well, but it was hugely successful.
What about the, Wade, what about the venue?
Venue itself was perfect.
Wasn't that something?
It was perfect. As a matter of fact, and I'll tell this story, we were in Arena Two at the Mariners Center, which was set up for the main base. There was one event that happened at the Grand Hotel on Saturday, they did a town hall there, where Mark Cullen did a talk with everyone, and basically, they put it there so that we could get ready for the award ceremony. And it's funny, I had a long conversation with the dignitaries who were here from Slovenia, of all places, who were just over the moon about how much, how great a time they had. Actually, my wife and I are invited to go to Slovenia, and these days we'll have to do that, but at any rate, we, the subject went to hockey, and they were quite proud of their hockey team, had done quite well at the world event, it was one of the world tournaments that were going on, and he said, where do you play hockey? And I said, you're standing on it, and he could not believe it. And I said, actually, you step out into the hallway, again, we were in Arena Two, and just walk, you know, 30 feet down, and you're going to find our first arena with ice on it, and the minute this is done, ice will be here. They just could not believe it. It was an amazing facility, it worked perfectly, I can't say enough how great everything was.
Yeah.
One other thing, while I've got you all here, there's going to be, on Tuesday night at Yarmouth Links, a thank you for our volunteers, and you are all invited. It's kind of the irony of my life, that I usually got 25 things going at all at the same time, we organize this thing, and I'm not going to be able to attend myself, so I feel very badly about that, but I do believe that all the counselors, yeah, I know, shake your head, all the counselors, I'd love to have as many counselors as I possibly could come to thank the volunteers.
Curling Club?
Yes, Yarmouth Links. That's the Curling Club, for older people who don't know.
Know where it is, yeah.
Six o'clock. And you're all invited.
There you go.
Are we good, Wade?
So that's mine.
Thank you. Steve, go ahead, Counselor Barry.
We had a great weekend, once again, to repeat what Counselor Cleveland said, without volunteers, things couldn't happen. Sometimes we get frustrated when we try to do events and people don't always step up, but boy, when they do, huh? We put on a show, so we had over 260 participants, most of which were youth. We had 25 teams, 21 which were youth teams, four adult teams, we had local businesses support us, the feedback that we got from downtown businesses, whereas, thank you very much, I know Jakes was lined up throughout the door.
Sepia Cafe was jammed.
Yep, those who decided not to open, it was probably not a good day to do that, but, and then, we had a wonderful day the next day, out at the Mariners Center for the championship games, which was well attended, and I would like to say thank you very much to Public Works, who helped us shut down the street by leaving out some barricades and stuff for us, Yarmouth Agricultural Society for fencing, and the boys out at the Mariners Center for helping out, and, once again, when we put on events and people step up, boy, we put on a show, so I'm looking forward to kind of what we can do with events moving forward, maybe next summer with C-Fest and other things, and, yeah, it was really great for Yarmouth, and so nice to see four or 500 people downtown enjoying.
It was fun, I saw a couple of games Saturday from 11 until 2, it was.
It's awesome.
Really neat, yeah.
It's great to see.
Nice to see, you know what's nice to see, it's nice to see ground hockey.
Yeah, for sure.
Is what, it's nice to see kids on the street.
And the kids playing, right, like, it's, yeah, it's awesome.
Counselor Barry?
I'd like to thank both counselors for going above and beyond, you definitely put us on the map every time you do any kind of event of any sort, and definitely, our volunteers have always been behind everything that we do, so I really would like to thank you publicly, thank you for doing all that you're doing to promote this town and putting us on the map.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions for any other committee chairs? We good? Additions would be 13A, Counselor Hood, the in-camera session. Do we have a motion from that?
Your worship, please, there's an existing contract arrangement waiting in the town, and a close developer relationship with high school, and I think. Motion that the contract arrangement be extended for a further period of six months.
Move the second.
Or until closed earlier, whichever occurs first.
Okay, move the second. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you, counselor. Counselor Cleveland, crosswalk.
Okay, this is, should be a quick one, might not be, from what I've just received, I've been going back and forth with some of the constituents who are quite concerned about the school area, and I have mentioned that before, but first off, to the CAO, through you, your worship, crosswalks, I was going to ask specifically on just the painting of, of course, we have new pave in certain areas, and crosswalks needed to be laid down. I do see that they have been working, because as I went for my walk today, I noticed that there is a crosswalk actually in my area, so is it all done? First off?
You can let me? Go ahead.
Your worship, as I drove into the meeting tonight, they were at the corner of Parade and Pleasant, doing crosswalks there, so it's still a work in progress.
Okay, good job on the painting by, or the paving, rather, I guess we have to pat ourselves on the back at least a little bit, but it's good, it's smooth. Makes going to work really fun.
So it looks like they're heading in that right direction with the crosswalk painting?
Yes, they are. Now, one more specific thing about crosswalks, and it's something I've brought up before, and that's at the new Yarmouth Elementary School, a group of parents have been very concerned about that area. Some of the corrections that I mentioned previously have been done, I know that the school zone has been adjusted. You mentioned that a crosswalk has been put across Grand Street. I believe you mean Grand Street from, through Brunswick Street, so across the road. They also were hoping, hoping to get a crosswalk across Brunswick Street, from one end of Grand to the other end of Grand, so crossing the road on the upper end would be safer. And I don't know if that's been done, or if it's in the works at all.
I'd have to look into that, I know we discussed it here, I don't know if a motion passed to ask the traffic authority to look into that, but I do recall the discussion. If the motion passed, then I would say it's in, under consideration.
Okay.
But when I drove through there before coming down, to see if those two had been painted on crossing Grand Street, going parallel with Brunswick.
Right.
They were both painted.
All right.
But I can tell you for sure, there wasn't one going across Brunswick Street.
Yes, and see, that's one of the main parts that they're quite concerned about, and I really would like to see that. If we hadn't passed a motion, I guess it's not, no motion?
Want to make a motion, counselor?
Can I make that motion? I'd like to make a motion that we put a crosswalk at the intersection of Grand and Brunswick.
Recommendation to?
And what I'm speaking.
Or, ask the traffic authority.
Okay, well, to ask the traffic authority to at least consider it, and what I'm talking about specifically again, is Grand Street crossing the road, so if you're crossing up at that intersection across Brunswick Street, on the upper end. So, I'm living in Grand, I'm trying to figure out, so I'm walking up. Up toward Grand Street from the school, and I, and I cross over Grand Street? Cross Grand Street, one end of Brunswick to the other side of Brunswick, so you're crossing, basically, you're crossing Brunswick Street from that Grand intersection.
Would it be on the, like, the same size, like Pam Door apartment?
Yes, from one end to the other on that upper end. What you have is an intersection, you have an intersection at Grand and Brunswick.
Two-way.
Two-way. It's a two-way, yes, it is. But, we have an ability to cross on a crosswalk at the bottom of Brunswick Street, so you'd be crossing at the stop sign on Parade Street, okay? So you could cross Brunswick Street that way. We should have it on the upper end as well, so that you can cross at Grand Street across Brunswick. People are crossing that road regularly when school is going in and going out, and it's a bit of a danger, and I'd like to see at least the traffic authority to look at that.
So I'll second your motion.
Yeah.
And just, but this is referral only to the traffic authority, not to do it.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. And if the traffic authority would like to ask questions of me, or any of the people who have been calling me, feel free to let him call. If we'd like to have a discussion, that would be perfectly acceptable, but I really feel strongly about this. I, look, I have a granddaughter there, I have vested interest, more than one person has people who are crossing the road, and it's a danger, and I would like to see it addressed. Thank you.
All those, question?
One question.
Okay, we need some lights turned off, and we need some lights turned on. Joe, you want to talk one thing, only one thing about a crosswalk, buddy, where?
Clifton Kirk.
Clifton Kirk, okay, we'll look at that one, man. Thank you for the lights, Counselor Barry.
I'm just wondering, in that same zone, is it marked, most times when they mark school zones, it's this way? I'm wondering, is the school zone marked that way too, on that side street that's going up Brunswick?
Question?
You know, because if you think about that, most schools that, like, our high school and stuff, it's usually just marked from a stretch like this, on a straight stretch. I think if you moved your school zone to that street there, up as far as what the school zone area is going to be, the people that are traveling through there will be traveling at a lower speed, less chance for kids to get hurt, and maybe your, I'm just looking at your stop sign, your crosswalk might not be a major issue, but at least with the school zone being there, it does create, make it safer.
Good.
Just thinking about it, I just don't know if it's there yet, so could we look into that?
Counselor Cleveland?
I can say that it's been changed, but I couldn't tell you exactly where. I know it's been moved further up.
Okay, question been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Accessibility, Counselor Cleveland?
It's me again, it's my day.
This is just a quick request for an update, CAO through you, your worship. This is just a quick request for an update, CAO through your worship. Earlier on, it's been a while now, we've been talking a lot about accessibility anyway, just as a general pattern. It's one of those words that's being used a lot these days. And I know we had talked about having the traffic authority take a look, doing an inventory of handicap spots during, through the central business district. And so I'm interested in whether or not that's been done, or if it's even being looked forward. That's part one. And part two is, we had talked about setting up an accessibility panel, and that kinda fell by the wayside. And I think there was a reason behind that, because we were waiting for more information, but I was wondering if anything has been moved on either of those issues.
So the two are related, but I probably have reasonably good news on both sides. We do have an inventory of handicap parking spaces throughout town, not just in the downtown, so that does exist. We also know that there is, well, based on our search, we were unable to find a standard for the number or ratio of handicap parking spaces on a street in a business district. There are suggested standards for parking lots, a ratio for those, so in any case, we do have some information on that. The accessibility committee initiative that we started and got out ahead on, it was followed by the Accessibility Act of Nova Scotia, which has specific requirements in it for municipalities. The province ran a pilot project in Woolfill, from which they learned something about the application of the act to a municipal context. They've created some resources that are available to municipalities. They have a requirement, I think it is? It may just be a suggestion, but I believe it's a requirement on the makeup of accessibility committees, which our initiative that we had started does not match, so we need to do some work. They have resources available, and they are going to start the clock for municipalities this fall, I believe, and I believe it will be in the spring of 2021 that we will have to have a municipal accessibility plan put together. The town of Woolfill, as I said, did a pilot, and so there is examples of what that could look like. And recently, at one of these meetings of CAOs and municipal administrators, we had the gentleman, now I'm trying to draw up his name, but he's the leader of the accessibility file under the Department of Justice, was here in our council chambers, presenting to the CAOs throughout the region. So there's gonna be a lot of work done. It's possible these municipal accessibility plans can be done jointly, which would be kind of an interesting way of approaching it. So there's been some work, and perhaps it can be the whole in two weeks, we can bring forward some of those resources and have a discussion.
Good. Thank you, councillor. Keep your light on, Wade. Councillor Cleveland with the ever-popular deer.
Yeah.
I see more deer in town than I do in Carl.
I do too, and this is why I'm bringing it up.
That's true.
And I know we've talked about it, we talk in circles about it quite a bit, and it's, and I understand why. It's one of those situations that it's almost a lose-lose in many ways, but we're, it seems to be getting worse, and that's why I bring it up. I've talked again, I talk a lot to constituents, and they're quite concerned, especially when you're talking about up the further end of town, probably north end, I guess, I guess I'm in south end. The northern end of town where there are a lot of deer, there are a lot. And even in my end of town, I live in the middle of town, for heaven's sakes, I live on Albert Street next to the church. Now, I don't know where I live.
I knew it was common, I knew it.
And there are deer. Yeah, could be.
I live in center town, you're on the north side of Albert.
Yeah, that's right. We're not sure. I think my side of the street is central town, and the other side of the street is actually south end, but at any rate, there are deer everywhere, and you have to be aware of them, especially certain times of the day. I've nearly hit deer coming home from work, I've done the same early in the morning, going for morning shifts. It's a problem, and I know, we've talked about it, I know we've talked in circles about it, but we have to figure out something. I know that, sure, I know we're opening up a can of worms here, but-
There's a call.
It's a couple of things.
There's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it.
Call pot-bellied pigs, don't let them in town.
Maybe the pot-bellied pigs chase deer off, maybe we should have approached it that way. But at any rate, we tried, but at any rate, it's really something that needs to be addressed. It's a safety issue.
Yeah, it is. Councillor Berry, and I think Jeff, and then Jeff, and then you, Don, is that all right?
Don't matter.
So if, just to remind council, I guess, on some of the activities that we've undertaken on this, about a year ago, roughly, give or take, we had a representative from Natural Resources who was, I guess, an expert on the deer file, came in, met with us in chambers, talked about some of the strategies, some of the possibilities to help to address it, and even identify whether or not there was an overpopulation. One thing we picked up from that meeting was the fact that Natural Resources said they didn't have jurisdiction within towns, so, you know, they could deal with the deer just outside of town, but they couldn't deal with the deer just inside of town. So that was a little disappointing. We did write a letter, we passed a motion at council back in the spring, asking Natural Resources to take over jurisdiction within the town, and we've not had a reply to that letter. That was late April, I believe, that letter went. In July of this year, the municipality, the District of Yarmouth, had a meeting that they arranged, I think it was July 23rd, at their building, to again meet with officials from Department of Natural Resources. An email was sent out to council, and I don't know if anybody from this council attended that night.
The municipal?
Yeah.
I was there.
So a couple of words, maybe they could update from that. I can tell you, just from personal observation, yep, they're everywhere, and in some places there's, I've noticed carrots at the end of driveways, you know? So the feeding of the deer, the baiting of the deer, to get a closer look, is my conclusion. Now, the carrot could have just, could be coincidence, the carrots were at the end of driveways, but.
I always think-
So town of Truro has had an issue, a big issue with deer, and they've been very upfront on this one. They had planned to do an urban call, and they called it off. Yeah, they called it off, so.
Yeah, this hour had twenty-two minutes to-
That could have been part of it.
Yeah, this hour had twenty-two minutes of people going down the street with crossbows and guns looking for deer.
So, but I think they're doing some sort of call within the large park they have there, but not generally in the-
I think there's two section there, I think there's a swamp in the Victoria Park that they're looking at. Councillor Berry, and then councillor Cleveland?
I guess pure selfish, my brother-in-law was driving a motorcycle and he was killed by a deer.
Of course.
So I'm just saying that there comes a limit on safety, one life is way too much. And I'm sure that there's others, but as selfish reasons, my brother-in-law being killed by a deer has really, inside of town, I can see it happening on the highway, I can see it, you know, it's just sometimes I've had a deer run up in front of me on the highway, bumped my car, and to spin around a few times and then pass away, but, and I was going at a slow speed. If we're gonna look after our people that live inside of town, it just doesn't work with deer and the people in our public together. We're just, we just don't get along. So therefore, we need to really investigate, we need to investigate some kind of solution. Like, every time you leave your house at night or go out, a deer looks you right in the face, you pull in your driveway to come in from, even from here tonight, when I pull in my driveway, there's one standing right there. So I'm looking, going, what if I hit it? There's another citizen that could possibly be gone, which would be me. So we really need to, we really need to focus on some kind of solution for pure safety, and so that we don't have another tragedy on our hands.
Thank you, Don. Councillor Cleveland?
Okay, one, just final statement, and then I promise I'll shut up. Well, relatively promise, anyway. It, a lot of people talk about, you know, how nice they are, and how nice it is to look at them, but it's just, we can't have, we can't lose lives to something like this. And they might think they're awfully nice to look at, but let them lose a member of their family because of an accident involving a deer, and then let's see how nice they think they are to look at. The other thing, my other thought is that I find it, I'm getting increasingly frustrated with pass-the-buck when it comes to the province, and it's about time that they get their feet held to the fire for at least a couple of issues that they just choose to ignore. It's wonderful how they govern the entire province, except the towns, where they can just leave them be, and leave them to sink or swim however they please to. And that kinda sums everything up for me. My third point is, let's do something, but I don't know what.
Could we, maybe look, I think councillor McLeod was at the meeting that night. John, were you there that night? In the, they're talking more long-term solutions than they were short-term fixes, right? When it came to vegetation, and when it came to planting, hedges, flowers, and around houses, feeding them, than they were talking about calls, and they were talking about some other ways to do it, right? Jim, you were there. They were talking about more long-term solutions than they were just to, they have a new, and actually, I think the gentleman that was there that night, is he a brand-new person to the area? The one that was sitting on the right? Maybe we can, we had the other gentleman, maybe councillor, maybe you can invite them to the next committee of the whole, make a motion, invite, I can't remember the new gentleman's name is, though.
The person from Yarmouth's board is a lot.
Yeah.
And we can get the check with the board.
Yeah. Maybe invite him to the next committee of the whole meeting, see if there's more shorter-term fixes than what, I think, like, through our parks committee, and through our recreation committee, Yarmouth Recreation, they've taken steps on what they plant, where they plant, how much they plant, to alleviate or try not to bring the deer population closer to some of our more populated areas. Todd has done, Todd has already done some of that long-term, some of that long-term range stuff, and that might take some time to, take a long time to kick in, from what they said from the Department of Natural Resources, but if you're looking for a shorter-term fix, and instead of, we're doing the first part, the long-range part, with their recs, with their rec people doing what they do with the fields, and what Todd does to the parks, if you're looking for a shorter-term fix, maybe we should invite the Department of Natural Resources in for the next available time that they're ready. And I think at the meeting, John and Jim, is, they were more inclined to work with towns than they have been over the last several years. He said that, he made that a specific point, that they're more inclined to work with, and willing to work with towns, because some of those lines there, you know how the urban sprawl is, but they are more able, more inclined, and want to work with towns to solve this problem. So councillor Cleveland, I believe, is gonna make a motion.
Yes, I will make that motion, that we request a member of the Department of Natural Resources, it's not called that anymore, is it? Or is it, is it still, whatever, okay.
The applicable department.
The applicable department, to come and make a presentation at their earliest convenience to community of the whole. It's an, it's an issue that needs to be looked at repeatedly. Thank you. So that motion's made.
Move in second. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? E is Gary Nickerson, I think maybe we might want to make a motion for something that's gonna happen tomorrow, Wade?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I did lie when I said I'd stop talking.
I threw you under the bus on this one.
Yeah, okay, well, Gary Nickerson, who has been the news director at the radio station for the past several years, and before that served in the news department, he came, he came to CJLS as a young person fresh out of broadcast school, I believe he came from broadcast school, at pretty much exactly the same time that I came on board, which would have been 1981, that's thirty-eight years ago. And he's retiring tomorrow, after serving the community and doing some amazing work over the last thirty-eight years. And so with that retirement, I would very much like to make a motion that we, A, congratulate him, perhaps we could send a letter congratulating on his retirement, and thanking him for the service he's given the town over the past thirty-eight years.
Yeah, well said. Very important individual in our community, and he's-
He is.
Did he play his last show, his last week?
Well, he's here, yeah, he was there yesterday. Last, tomorrow, his very last broadcast will be at six o'clock. On, six o'clock in the evening will be his last newscast, and he did a couple of the interviews for the coming Weekender, and that will be, you think about that, after thirty-eight years, on Sunday on the Weekender, just after nine o'clock, will be the last time you will hear him on the air as a member of the staff of CJLS, so that's quite a thing.
Quite, I went to school with Gary, one right through to the end, and he was quite an interesting individual, but he will be missed, and he's a great part, and an integral part of this community, so. Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Not even gonna ask for the contraries, 'cause I don't have to. Correspondence for, I don't think there's any other additions. Correspondence for action, Shift presentation, Jeff, is that you?
So your worship, Shift would like to make a presentation to council, and so as per our policy, when somebody wants to make a presentation, we bring it forward, we ask you if you wish to hear the presentation, and if you do, we arrange it.
Moved by councillor Berry, seconded by councillor Berry, it looks like. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye? Aye. Contrary-minded? That's the next available, next available meeting for them. And consulate general of the Republic of Turkey, re Sarah Corning inscription, CAO.
Your worship, you know, we're well aware, and we were aware for a while now, that the issue is one of some sensitivity that was raised by the consulate general from the Republic of Turkey. It is with regard to the inscription on the Sarah Corning statue that has recently been unveiled on Parade Street. The exception is taken to the term genocide that is used in the inscription. I did a little bit of research, your worship, to determine what the position of the Government of Canada is on that term as it relates to the events between 1915, 1923. And in fact, Prime Minister Harper and Prime Minister Trudeau have both confirmed that Canada's position is that it is, it was a genocide. And so, some response is due to the Republic of Turkey. I will point out a couple of things, one is the statue was donated, it was donated to the Yarmouth County Museum, and it is their statue on their land. We were a partner in the celebration and the arrangements. I don't want to, I don't think it's right to just shirk the issue off on them, but I did that little bit of research, just to kind of put it in context from the Canadian perspective. I think there is a committee of the United Nations that has similarly identified the events as a genocide, and so I leave it to you. I don't have a specific recommendation to you, other than perhaps you may want to indicate that, notwithstanding their position and concern, that the position of the Government of Canada is consistent with the inscription.
Councillor McLeod?
When I read the letter, I forwarded it actually to Jennifer Chown, and just the first paragraph of her response to me, the letter to Mayor Mood appears to be a standard letter, which we received earlier as well, according to the Armenian ambassador and officials at the ANCC and- tweaks to fit each recipient. And responding to what you have just indicated, Jeff, I know that we were a large part of, organizing and helping to organize the statue and its location, I think the town and the museum and the Sarah Corning Society should somehow get together and, and respond, just with the appropriate letter, may take a while to organize, but I don't think that we should need to hurry to do that, based on what Jennifer Chown has said to me in response to that, to what you've just explained.
Want to make that in the form of a motion, Counselor?
Well, there's, that was just discussion, I see two other lights flashing over there, and then based on what they might say.
We'll go from there, thank you.
But I can, I can make, anyway.
We'll, we'll go from there, we'll see, well, maybe we should make a motion first, and then have discussion afterwards?
So just based on what I just said, that the town and the Sarah Corning Society and the museum should get together on substance of a letter, which we could respond to the appropriate address.
Good, thank you. Seconded, for discussion, Counselor Cleveland first, and Counselor Hood.
Okay, just very quickly, I find this kind of ironic in the extreme, considering what's happening with the Turkish army right now.
As we just said.
So that's, I find it a little bit, is insulting a good word? I guess it is. I think, I think the letter should be very diplomatic, and I'm sure that the people who will write it will be much more diplomatic than I would be, so I support the motion. But, come on, folks.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Hood.
I would not support anything that diminishes the statement contained on the memorial, that it was a genocide. My great aunt Rita served as did with the same group that Sarah Corning did, I heard at her knee what went on there. I have done the research as well, it was a genocide. If Canadians committed a genocide, such as the Prime Minister has said we did, in response to the, to the commission that just happened, it does not compare at all to what happened in Turkey between 1916 and 1920, when not only were Armenians the subject of genocide, but so were Greek citizens who were expelled at the same time. It was a horrific situation. So I'm, I'm, I'm worried that the motion is going to put it in the hands of some bureaucrats and try to make the Turks feel good, and they shouldn't do it.
I think the bure, I think the bureaucrats, he might be talking about, like, I think you said between us and Sarah Corning Society and the museum, right?
So I, I want to.
They should continue to feel damn shame.
You know, I, so.
Go ahead, Jim.
I made that suggestion, and it ended up being in the form of a motion. I listened to what Counselor Cliff has just said, and based on what, if I read the rest of Jennifer Chown's letter to me, she just wants to drop it.
Well, make a, make a.
And, and so, you know.
We'll draw your motion, we'll just send them a letter, say that we agree with the, uh, agree with the inscription on the Sarah Corning Memorial.
But I'm listening, not even that, I'm listening to what Jeff has said, and, and so somehow rather, the parties need to know, and I can support what Cliff has said, because Jennifer herself is, is ignoring it, she's seen this response before in other areas. So I'll send you the letter, Jeff, if you wish, and, but, so I'm okay with withdrawing the motion, because I, there's no question, Counselor Cliff and best friend, that, that happened, and I, and you feel, I feel just as strongly as you do. So I'm, at this point, based on what you've said, and you reminded me about reading the rest of the letter that Jennifer wrote, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Seconded was, Don, you agree on?
Personally, I think that the letter needs to be drafted, I think we need to make a. And that this was a, we really need to, we need to put it out there, that, that we solely agree of what's on there, and that it's going to withstand in our town, otherwise it's going to come back the bite, this and the butt, again and again and again, let's get to the, let's get to the chase, and send them a letter on how we really feel, and that we're supporting what's there right now. I don't think it has to be something drawn right out, I think it needs to be the three groups that he mentioned, I think they need to write a, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that they can craft a, a, a letter to this response, and let's get this done with.
Good.
Let's, don't just dismiss it.
Do we need a motion, Jeff, to maybe refer to staff with the other organizations to come back with a response, or are we comfortable sending a response to them right now, saying that we agree with the inscription?
I think, I, I think we have to dot the i's and cross the t's if we're going to respond.
Okay, okay.
So I'll second, I'll second Don's motion.
Okay. Which was? Lynn, we got a motion from Counselor Berry?
No.
That's more of a comment.
Get together and crack the letter, say that we support what's on, what's on, on the.
Yeah, yeah.
On the inscription.
That's motion seconded.
That's fine, I mean.
That's good.
Absolutely.
That'll get everybody in the room. Jim, you good with that?
I'm good, yeah.
It speaks to a correct and true historical fact of the past. The task today is to move past the past and into the future. In Turkey, we would hope, as a fellow member of NATO, we would hope, they are a member of NATO, and so are we, I would hope, would understand that, acknowledge, I mean, we, Canada has acknowledged its contribution to the sad plight of Aboriginal people in this country. The Prime Minister has done so, I may, I may disagree with the Prime Minister's characterization and the authors of the report of it being a genocide, but it's still a fact, that Aboriginal people have been marginalized by the, by our ancestors who came here and conquered their lands and so on. But we have to move forward, we can't, you know, people, and, and so I, I'm supporting, I'm seconding the motion, because I believe it should be framed in terms that support what was, what was placed on the, on the memorial, it was a, well, that's enough said.
Good. Question?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor, signify by aye? Contrary? Thank you. Jeff, we have nothing else left on camera? Can we have a motion to, go in camera, please? Who's seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, thank you, everybody. Joe, you want to say something, buddy, what do you want to say? Oh, Joey, put that sweater on TV there, man. You got her? Get up there, get a little closer, Joe, okay, we're getting it. You got a scarf too, Joe, or just a sweater? Just a sweater? Right on. Thank you, Joe.